Could I have your attention? I know that we have several folks who've not finished your dessert, so I hope you will continue to eat as we move along with our program. I want to thank all of our speakers for a great, great morning session. I think it's been extremely instructive and enjoyable, and thank you, thank you all. And kind of continuing down that same road, we have a special treat today at lunch. By the way, my name is Laura Meadows. I'm Director of the Carl Vinson Institute of Government. I forgot to give that little bit of information. Today, we have a speaker who really needs no introduction, but it's my job to introduce him, so I will. He is, actually, this is his home, so I think that he was glad for the invitation to be able to be here in Athens today. Michael Thurman is Superintendent of the DeKalb County School District, which is, of course, the third-largest school system in the state of Georgia with nearly 99,000 students and more than 13,400 employees. That's a big system. He's currently on leave from the Butler Wooton and Frahofer Law Firm. Michael Thurman was born a sharecropper's son in Clark County, and I've heard his amazing story several times, and the story about how education made all the difference to him and his family. He received a Bachelor of Arts degree in philosophy and religion from Payne College and a Juris Doctor degree from the University of South Carolina School of Law. In 1986, he became the first African-American elected to the Georgia General Assembly from Clark County since Reconstruction. During his legislative tenure, Michael Thurman authored major legislations that provided more than $250 million in tax relief to Georgia's senior citizens and working families. Following his legislative service, Thurman led the State Division of Family and Children's Services, where he helped create the innovative Work First Program. In November 1998, he was elected Georgia Labor Commissioner, becoming the first non-incumbent African-American to be elected statewide in Georgia. In 2010, he was the Democratic Party's nominee for the United States Senate. If you've heard him speak, you know why. He has been a motivational speaker for many, many groups, including state school board associations in nine southern states on issues regarding leadership, diversity, and public education advocacy. He's the author of several books, including Freedom: Georgia's Anti-Slavery Heritage, 1733 to 1865, which won the Georgia Historical Society Lila Hall's Award. One thing, and I don't know how we did this, but in your program where his biography is written, it failed to mention one very important thing. He actually was a distinguished lecturer at the Carl Vinson Institute of Government, and how we left that out of the program, I will never know. But help me welcome our DeKalb County School District Superintendent, Michael Thurman.
Good afternoon. First, I want to thank, really, my longtime friend, young lady I have admired and watched as her career has blossomed and grown. And let's give our Director of the Carl Vinson Institute of Government a round of applause. Thank you so much. Soon to be Dr. Laura Meadows. Thank you so much, Laura, for your leadership, for planning and organizing this important conference on school board governance. I'm convinced that the future of public education in Georgia will be greatly enhanced by the work of the public servants who have come here today and who have been called to serve on local school boards across the great state of Georgia. The policies and budgets that you enact, and more importantly, the superintendents that you hire, will play a critical role in shaping Georgia's economic and educational destiny. Until recently, Laura, and you know this, and we discussed it, school board governance has often been overlooked and undervalued by national and state educational reformers. Instead of governance, we focus a great part of our time on school finance, standardized tests, the charter school movement, increased rigor in the classroom, teacher preparation and development, as well as central office decentralization. They've all been the primary focus of reformers, both here in Georgia and at the national level. But I'm convinced that this conference is evidence of a growing realization that effective school board leadership and effective school board governance through policymaking is essential to improving the success of our public schools. And to all who've gathered here today in my hometown of Athens, my heartfelt thanks to you for your service to the children of Georgia. And having served in various political offices for more than three decades, I can state without any reservation, I know that being a school board member is the toughest political job you can find. It is a tough, tough job. I know what it's like when you're out in your hometown with your wife, your family, your children, having a dinner on Friday or Saturday evening, and some honest constituent, stakeholder comes up and says, "I know you're having dinner, but..." Fair enough. And even in church on Sunday morning, "I know you had to offer the prayer, but..." I know it's 5:30 in the morning, but... So thank you so much for what you're doing for our children and making a difference in their lives. Before I proceed, I want to take the opportunity to recognize some very close, personal friends in the audience. First of all, I have to recognize one of my most cherished mentors and friends, Mrs. Sis Henry. Give her a hand. She is a lady who really introduced me to school board governors and helped me to understand the complexities of serving in this capacity, and she has made it possible for me to work with school board members, not just here in Georgia, but all across the southeastern United States. She is the preeminent advocate for public education in Georgia. Sis, I love you. Also, because I want to continue to be employed, we'll recognize three of my nine bosses who are here today. Mr. Thad Mayfield is there in the now, get that a hand. Attorney Marshall Orson, thank you so much, Marshall. And of course, the Vice Chair of the DeKalb School Board, Mr. Jimmy McMahon himself. That'll keep me employed for another at least two months, I know, see. I know how this game works, see. But they have been by my side, and I thank them for giving me this opportunity to serve in this unique capacity. And I thank them also for their dedication and commitment to improving education in DeKalb County. Also, my Chief of Staff is here, Ms. Ramona Tyson, as well as my partners from the McKenna Law Governance Center. I know Eric Tenenblatt is here, and Crystal and Erica, and I'm not sure who else, but thank y'all so much for your support and assistance. These are difficult and trying times for Georgia's educational leaders. Billions of dollars have been lost in average tax revenue, and deep state budget cuts have transformed the management of local school districts into what easily could easily be described as mission impossible. Tony Orson knows that unprecedented revenue losses, political leaders and other stakeholders who demand greater fiscal and employee accountability, and most important outcry over student underperformance has changed the landscape of school governance in Georgia and America. Every day I hear and you hear, a growing chorus of disgruntled critics who have declared that our schools are broken beyond repair and redemption. And despite these challenges, despite the critics, I encourage each one of you not to go weary in your good doings. Despite those who doubt, and despite those who may not fully understand, I implore you to keep the faith. And despite those who make very, very harsh speeches about the quality of our education, it is my hope, and often it is my prayer, that the men and women in this room will continue to believe that every child deserves the opportunity to get a quality education in Georgia. I continue to hope that the men and women in this room and across this state who've answered the call to serve our children will continue to believe that every child, no matter where he or she may have been born, no matter the race, color, creed, can learn and succeed in America today. And for those, not in this room, but for those beyond the sound of my voice, who may harbor some unresolved doubts, Brad, for those, Jim Bostick, who, unlike you and Brad, who still believe, for those I stand at this podium this afternoon, and I say to the doubters that your speaker this afternoon is a living, breathing testament to the transformative power of public education in Georgia. Your speaker, your superintendent, is the recipient, is the beneficiary of an education that has transformed lives and broken a generational cycle of poverty. Your speaker is descended from three generations of Georgia sharecroppers. A father sharecrop cotton, his father's sharecrop cotton, and my father's 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 sharecrop cotton. And if you really think about it, if you really think about it, sharecropping was a family business in my life. But you know, the truth of the matter is that not that far from this location, we cropped a lot more than what we shared. But although my father could not read or write, he and my mother believed in the power and the sanctity of education. And although my family lacked material wealth, my life was enriched beyond measure by teachers and principals and school board members who saw something of value in a little boy who lived on a dirt road in a rural plot of Clark County called Sandy Creek. My life, my life was lifted by teachers and principals and school board members who invested time and energy and placed the best interests of the children they were teaching before their best interests. Their return on investment, their return on investment was to break a generational cycle of poverty that stretched back several generations. And for any who doubt the transformative power of public education, I say to you, in one generation from that Georgia sharecropper named Senator Thurman, he gave birth and he raised a son who became a lawyer, author, legislator, statewide elected official, a superintendent of the third-largest district in Georgia and the 26th-largest district in America. That's what public education can be. And by the way, if you look at me and see anything other than a Georgia sharecropper, you need to look a little bit closer. Because even though I wear a blue suit today, if you look at my heart and spirit, I got the heart and spirit of a Georgia sharecropper. Because sharecroppers believe in two things. Number one, they believe in hard work, and number one, number two, they can take a little bit and do a whole lot. So what I am is a Georgia sharecropper. But Laura, I'm just a sharecropper with a law degree, and that makes me a bad man. But there are hundreds and millions of Michael Thurmans in your school system today. I'm not unique. I'm not special. I am one of those who benefited from others who believed when others doubted. So the one thing as school board members and as superintendents and as educators we must do is that we must believe in the children we're trying to educate. Coming over on 7/8 today, I thought a lot about this visit, Laura, and coming back home to Athens, and, you know, no matter how great or large the problems I face every day, when I get to Athens, they seem just a little bit smaller. They seem just a little less significant. And somehow, I feel like I can grasp and deal with almost anything when I get to this place called Athens. But when I think about public education today, I think of my career. Because you see, the first 11 years of my life here in Athens, I went to all segregated It seemed like it was a long time ago, but it wasn't. And in my senior year, the mostly all-white high school, Athens High, was consolidated with the all-African-American Bernie Harris High School, and we became the first graduating class of Clark Central High School in the fall of 1970. We graduated in '71. Y'all remember those days? Seemed like a long time ago, but it was a little more than 40, just 40 years ago, right? And I remember those first days at school, when the big question that everyone had on their mind was, could white teachers teach black children? Could African-American teachers teach white children? Seems like a long time ago, but it wasn't. And the one thing the last 40-plus years have taught us is that it doesn't matter what color the teacher is, if you love them, you can teach them, but if you don't love them, you never will. It's all about if you love the children. One of the things I've seen here in DeKalb as a superintendent, and by the way, y'all don't believe the hype, I have been so impressed by how smart and intelligent the students are in DeKalb County and in other counties. I have just been blown away by what I see. Do not believe it. And one of the things, when I walk into a pre-K class and I sit there, you know, I can't tell which one of those children's parents vote Republican. I just can't tell which one voted Republican. It's just impossible. As school board members, as superintendents, the challenge is, can we commit ourselves not to a political agenda, a partisanship, but can we commit ourselves to ensuring that every child has access to a quality education? You know, being an elected school board is very unique. I've never quite seen anything like an elected politician, school board member. When I travel around the southeast, I ask school board members, "How many of you all are politicians?" And only about 10% will raise their hand. School board members don't even consider yourself to be what? A politician. Well, if you have to run and get elected, guess what that makes you? And to be honest with you, it's one of the most brutal forms of politics I have ever met, right? But that's okay. Being an elected official, a politician, is not a disgrace. What it means is that a majority of the people in your election district has expressed a belief and a confidence in you, that you can represent them and, more importantly, represent the children that you enroll. Secondly, about school board members, Tony, that's so unique to me, is that although you don't view yourself as a politician, you operate in one of the most political, high-profile, contentious, stressful political environments possible. And even with that, according to Georgia state law, we don't expect you to act like politicians or elected official, right? Because even after you have to spend your money, your time, begging for votes in difficult places, right? Once you're elected, we say, "But you can't act that way. Don't listen to the people who elected you." Right, Brad? You are elected from a district, but you don't represent what? Y'all got it all worked out? You understand that now? Even though your friends, your neighbors, your church members, your community members will pool their resources and get in their cars and go door-to-door for you and work for you to get you elected, once you get elected, the last thing you can do is respond unlike any political job that I have ever had the experience of engaging. Even though you're not political, most of the revenue that's appropriated to school districts is appropriated by one of the most partisan political institutions on the face of earth. That's the Georgia Journal of the Senate. My friend from Advance Air, she's smiling, right? Right, Veronica? But you're not supposed to act like politicians. We elect you to help get things straightened out at the school district, right? But as soon as you get elected, what do we tell you? You have no influence, involvement in hiring anyone other than the superintendent. And so when those parents call you about that principal or about that teacher, it's shocking to realize that you have absolutely nothing to do. And if you shock, think how the people feel who elected you to go straighten out. This is being a school board member in Georgia. How you deal with all of this? Focus. Commit yourselves. Subjugate yourself. One of the things I've always learned in life, the only time I've ever been able to achieve things significant, is when I subjugated my own ambitions, my own wants, and my own desires. By the way, folks, I did not ask to be superintendent of DeKalb. I didn't wake up that morning wondering if the DeKalb School District would call me to come and serve. My friends, even my wife and my daughter begged me not to go. My political advisor said you would ruin any hope you ever had. The last place you want to go is where? DeKalb. So I went over to DeKalb, and I looked around, and nine board members were facing suspension. We had a $14.7 million deficit. Ms. Veronica's and I brought a vogue air guard at places on accredited probation. Stakeholders, internal and external, had no trust in the district. Academics were failing, and other than that, they were in pretty good shape. But you know what? When you hear the call, you have to answer it. If you've spent 30 years in public service believing and stating that you want to give your life to public service, you will have the opportunity to do that. It's the best thing I've ever done. I'm more excited than I've ever been. I'm more optimistic than I've ever been. Matter of fact, AJC reporter really criticized me for being too optimistic. Said, "Don't you know here in DeKalb, you're the superintendent? How can you be that...?" Because when you go into a situation like that, you don't look at the problems, you look at your assets. Deficit-driven strategies rarely succeed. If you go to a board meeting and if you spend 30 minutes, an hour, hour and a half, two hours talking about the deficits you have in school district and not looking at your assets, after that one day in DeKalb, I realized I had 100,000 assets, who were my students. I had 14,000 assets, employees, and all the other problems paled in comparison. Last two things. You got to have a school board that cooperates and works together for the general good of the community, of the district, of the county. You must hire a superintendent who's qualified and focused and can provide leadership for all the other employees in the district. You need trained, educated, skilled leaders in the school, and you need focused, dedicated principals and teachers. But a great majority of the studies I read, that even though you got a great board and a great superintendent and great teachers and great principals, the individual that has the greatest impact on a child's educational career is not the superintendent, not the school board, not the principal, not the teacher. It is to who? We can't get this job done without parents. Now, one of the big mistakes we made and we allowed ourselves to be pushed in this corner is that we've allowed the politicians to shift all of the responsibility for educating our children primarily on teachers and principals. It is a huge political blunder on our behalf. When all the studies show that the greatest influence is whom? Parents. What we have done is that we've allowed the fact that if parents aren't showing up to PTA, we interpret that to mean parents are not concerned or they don't love their children. That is not what that means. Don't, as young folks say, get it twisted. I spent a very, very hot afternoon in a parking lot at Walmart with 1,000-plus parents who were waiting for their children to be transported from McNair to that parking lot so they could take them home. And I was there with them up close and personal, and I can tell you, I saw love, and I saw concern, and I saw dedication and commitment in the eyes of those parents. Governance is not just what happens at the school board meeting. Something Bill I taught me, who leads the Governance Center at McKenna Law, how we interact with every stakeholder defines the quality of our government. Last thing. The big challenge we got to overcome, we got to move the discussion beyond race. Often, public education becomes a euphemism for what? A lot has changed in 40 years, haven't? From that day I set foot at Clark Central High School, but you know, at my 40th class reunion, we still had two. One for the black kid, one for the white kid. They're all over by 85 years old, and we still... Because it's interesting, because I would read two students by the president, and I would do, "Black, guess which one I was." Come on, Brad, you figure it out. Come on, man. Come, come. You think it, right, man? We need to move forward. So let me show you what the studies show. It's not a question of race anymore, folks. It's really a question of opportunity, of economic disadvantage. I can tell you now, in grades 3, 2, 5, 3, 3rd through 5th grade, with the CRCT test in MAF, I had a data-driven analysis done, Jim, and I looked at it. MAF now, that's supposed to be the most difficult of all subjects, right, Laura? Non-economically disadvantaged white students, about 97% passed the test. Non-economically disadvantaged African-American students, about 90% passed the test. So when the achievement gap began to talk about whites achieve, it's not that. If you look at non-economically, economically disadvantaged African-American students, what do you think percentage that passed the MAF test, grades 3, 2, 5? Or economically disadvantaged African-American students? I'm getting ready to surprise you. Now, I thought it was much lower. Now, I thought it was much lower. You thought it was much lower. And the reason we think it's much lower, because we have been told that the public education system is a what? The data tells a different story. Economically disadvantaged student, red, white, black, blue, gray, white, black, Hispanic, Asian, score at levels lower than their cohorts, who are not economically disadvantaged. It's not race. We filter everything through our lens and we say what? Race. But it's not. The aha moment, the thing that will transform public education, is when we can move this discussion from a discussion about race. I know times are tough, I know money is short, I know patience is short, I know that there are many who do not believe as we do, but I encourage you once again to don't give up. I was sitting there eating lunch and looking across the campus, Ramona, and over near Merritt Housing on the other side of East Campus Road, uh, that College State, what's that, East Campus? This road I hear? Instead of Merritt Housing, there used to be an all-black settlement called Allenville. And my dad, who shellcrop cotton and worked in the poultry, he also had a vegetable route. And I used to ride all over campus, because there were professors that we would sell fruits and vegetables to. And we'd go to Allenville and we'd go out South Village, and we would stop by Ms. Lucy Combs' house, who, who owned the land that we shellcrop. She lived right over there on South Village Avenue, the house is still there today. I'd go by and I'd look at it from time to time. And as we traveled around Athens, my job would be to take the vegetables in to the people who bought them. Sis. And one lady, my dad by name, Sid Thurman, she said, "Sid Thurman, I want a peck of peas." Now, Laura, you can really get a P A D, how much is a peck of peas? Everybody from the country, everybody know, and, and, and I knew somebody from the country. A peck is what? About, not quite a bush, about a quarter of a bush, right? How much? Four? Yeah, four, four of a bush, that, that's it. Give him a hand, I like that, that's a four, four of a bush. We go over there, first lady says, "Sid Thurman, I want a dozen of roasting ears." What a roasting ears. Come on, alright, I'm in Georgia, I got one that no one has answered. I've been all over the southeast, all over the country. We go to Ms. Suzie's house, who we raising up since grandchildren, and she said, "Sid Thurman, I want a miss a college degree." Now, how much is a miss? Well, see, if you're a good man, a miss is enough to make a meal, so you gotta know how many folk in the family, right? And all of a sudden, a miss, it, it depends on where you are. I hated that job, folks. I hated that job, it's like, God, please, get me off the back of this little ragged and blue Chevrolet truck, smoking, and the main reason I hated the job, because all the little pretty girls from school would see me naked, "Oh, they Michael Thurman." Send me to college, send me somewhere, Tim, man, right? Just get me out of that truck. And I used to feel so bad, do you remember how parents used to hate you? Do chores, and you just said, "Why is he doing this to me?" And one day, we were riding back out to Sandy Creek, which is a nature center, that's where I grew up, and daddy noticed I was a little bit down, he looked at me, he said, "Boy, raise your hand." I said, "Let me tell you something, so you just say your prayers and you keep working hard, and one day, one day, this vegetable route will be yours." I was like, "Man, I don't want a vegetable route, right?" So finally, you know what, my daddy took the dollars of dancing quarters and bought the college degree in Augusta, helped buy the law degree in Columbia, South Carolina, right? With a little bit of nothing and a whole lot of faith and hard work. And so I came back here with a law degree, I started practicing law, God called my daddy home, he died as he had near, with very little material wealth. And right after that, I decided I was going into politics, because I had had a lifelong dream of getting to Atlanta and serving under Gold Dome. I just used to sit and watch it, I said, "That's my goal, I'm gonna get there one day." And I ran down to the courthouse and got a map. Y'all know how it is when you first decide to get ready to run for office? You go get a map of your district, about the first thing you do, then you start looking at all sorts of, kind of, which neighborhoods and which houses, and I got my map, and then I realized I didn't have any money, no experience, didn't know who to turn to, where to go, all I had was a map and a dream. And for days, I studied that map, and one day, Laura, looking at the map, and out of all my frustration and confusion, I noticed something very familiar about the map. Inside the map was Broad Street, ran the Nellie Bee, ran the Rock Spring, that ran to the First Street, that ran to Second Street, all the streets inside my district were the same street my daddy's old vegetable route used to run on. So I decided I would just follow my daddy's vegetable route. So I went out, knocked on the door, I said, "Ma'am, excuse me, I'm Mike Thurman, I'm running for the..." She said, "No, sir," she said, "I know who you really are." She said, "You see it, Thurman, Mary, Mary?" I said, "Yeah, man." So I remember, "You don't know the wrong man, Joe, boy." I said, "Yeah, I vote for you, put a sign on." When I remember it first, oh yeah, I remember your daddy had nine children, sent them all to college. He worked hard, he loved you all. Said, "Yeah, if your daddy was a good man, I'll vote for you." They voted for me because I had a law degree or college degree, we voted because I had what? A good dad. And finally, I went to the lady's house, and the lady said, "You don't know me, but I know you, my grandma was Ms. Suzie, and your daddy used to give us fruits and vegetables on credit." And because of that, we kept food on the table, said, "Yeah, I put a sign, but let me tell you, give me your card, so I'll take him to church, and I'm gonna have a map, the pastor to pray for you." You see, my father did exactly what he promised me he would do. He left me his old vegetable route. But it wasn't just a vegetable route, it was a pathway to success. Well, I'm saying to you, money's short, tax revenues are down, but I'm telling you, you have what you need. You have a love for children. You have faith in children. You have a belief that tomorrow can be better than today. And most of all, you have faith. So I say to you, don't give up, don't give out, and don't go weary. All things are possible for those who will truly love and believe in our children. Thank you.
You know, when you respond to the speaker, you're supposed to come up with something really witty to say, and it's just always impossible to do that with Michael Thurman. Just suffice it to say, thank you, Michael, for being with us today. I think you provided the perfect bridge from this morning's, um, program to this afternoon. Uh, we'll be reconvening in just a few minutes, literally, if you would just take a real short break and reconvene, uh, back in the, uh, Oakwood Room where we were this morning. Uh, this afternoon, we'll be, uh, talking about the intersecting responsibilities of boards and, uh, superintendents. We have some wonderful speakers, and you're not gonna like these instructions, but let me tell you anyway. If you will, when you go back in the room, we're trying to get a variety of opinions and, uh, at each table, so if, if you would try to limit the number of board members per, uh, system to two at each table, so if you'll try to spread out a little bit so that we can have some good discussions this afternoon, uh, we would appreciate that. So, thank you, we'll reconvene in just, just very few minutes back in the Oakwood Room. Thank you so much.